It's ten o'clock. I'll call the special meeting to order. This is a public hearing, a public hearing to consider approving the amended 2018 budget. So I'll open the public hearing. And Mike, you'll be presenting for the city?
Absolutely. Mike Warbasker, Director of Finance. We have five funds today that we're going to consider for amendment to approve budget for 2018. Those funds, the airport fund, special use sales tax, special parks and recreation, our bond and interest fund, and our education sales tax fund. On the slide, you can see in the first column, that's what was adopted for 2018. The second column represents the amendment, and you can see the dollar increase for each one of the specific funds in the far right-hand column. We'll go into a little detail as to what's driving the request for these increases. Looking at the airport fund, the big thing that is driving this is $160,000 in fuel purchases at the airport, and that is driven by an increase from our projections on what they sell will be for 2018. So it's a good thing. So we have, of course, bonding increases in revenue to go with it. Just as a couple notes, we are projecting for the year-end, and we are there now, but at the time this was put together, we were not sure how much fuel is going to need to be purchased. The big thing there is our biggest customer at the airport is Cessna. They have a big year-end refueling project, so we want to make sure we have the fuel there to support their project. Any questions on this particular fund?
What, I think with protocol, you'll go ahead and present.
Sure. Sure, and then come back to them?
Yeah, we'll come back to questions.
Absolutely. So the next fund is the special use sales tax. Through our 2018 budget cycle, in our CIP, we recognize what we thought was going to be spent under this fund. Along the way, we had some other projects come on that were approved by the commission. However, they were not pledged. And I've highlighted the big ones here. This isn't all encompassing, but these are the major ones that make up nearly 100% of the increase over what was approved. We had Memorial Hall stage lighting project, the trainer contract that was entered into for architectural services for the Phase One on the City Hall. Now granted, we have not spent all those dollars on the trainer deal, but it was a contract that was executed in '18, and so it does have to be encumbered and recognized in '18. The same thing as far as an encumbered standpoint with training systems. We entered into an engineering contract for our 2018 ADA. We have begun to see some of those bills come through, but we will encumber the entire $84,000 contract. We had to replace the Cessna pump house roof. This was our portion of replacing that roof. And then in addition, going back to the City Hall Phase One project, we had to move our records archive. There was $51,000 spent there for our storage containers, materials, and then equipment, and bring in labor to move those. Special Parks and Recreation. We have a funding obligation when the ASU Center exceeds their revenue, both us and USD 446. What was allocated for 2018 in the budget, what we were billed for in our obligation was $4,000 over the budget amount. Bond and interest fund, as we were putting together the 2018 budget, part of what goes into this is capturing all the outstanding bond obligations, researching the information back in our system that I can find. Because the 2010 series had been refunded into the 2016, that piece of it had been removed from the bond schedule that I was using to put together the budget. So the 2010 still does have an obligation, and then expires this next year, but it was not captured in there. So the difference represents that the amount that was owed on the 2010 series. And then finally, the education sales tax. This is another 1% that is collected by the city. A portion of that is used to cover our education, our bonds, excuse me, our bonds that are used as part of the education in the building of the infrastructure out of the Jefferson Elementary School. Once that's done, the remainder of that is passed through. Of course, we did see increased sales tax collections in 2018, so that is the cause for the increase in this fund. So now I'll open it up for any questions?
At this time, with the public hearing, I'll open for comments from the public. If there are no comments from the public, then we'll close the public hearing and open it up for commission questions and discussion. Commissioners?
Yeah, would you run by that airport?
Sure, absolutely.
Like you just stated earlier, I'd run back to that. This is an increase in fuel sales.
That's right.
Yeah, generated a little over $160,000 additional that we didn't count on.
There is an increase, yeah. So one big thing, when we purchase fuel, because we are on a cash basis, it's inventory, and a normal business, that would be captured as inventory and exist on the balance sheet. We're on a cash basis, so when I buy fuel, whether we sold it or not, it's expensed at the time we sell it, or at the time we purchase it, excuse me. So we are projecting for the entirety of the year, an increase of $160,000 in additional fuel purchases on our end of it that was offset by additional fuel sales. Now, not all of that today is necessarily going to be, we're not going to necessarily sell all $160,000 of additional fuel that is purchased, because there again, part of it would be inventory. I don't project that we're actually going to see that increase quite as high, but we did have to allow for it to amend the budget, to make sure that we had ample room to move in there if we did have to purchase all that to support Cessna.
Okay, so this dollar amount is already spent on fuel?
Not all of it. We were anticipating about $80,000 worth of purchases this month. I think we're going to see that much, but throughout the course of the year, yes, we've sold more fuel, therefore, we've had to purchase more fuel.
So we have to treat it as an expense?
We do. Once we purchase it, if I buy $50,000 of fuel today, then I expense $50,000 of the fuel, and it's set in a barrel or in a container waiting to be sold.
But it's not like running a boutique where you buy something, you may never sell it. We know we're going to sell the fuel, so...
That is correct.
So the funds, the $160,491, is that coming from the airport fund on receipts that you're transferring over to Spinsturm? Or is that money got to come out of general fund to shore up the airport fund?
This is strictly just on expenditure. It's not transferring dollars. This is built straight to the airport fund.
But what I'm asking is the $160,000 that we're amending the expense?
That's correct.
Budget, not the receipts.
That's right.
So as we increase our spending, that money to compensate the spending, has the airport fund generated the revenue that that money can come out of general, the airport fund? Last year, in a few years, it's been pretty close. Like, we only had $3,000 carryover.
Right.
So is the airport fund solid enough that all 160 comes out of airport revenue? Or do we have to take money from general fund to...
To shore that up? So we have put $25,000, we budget $25,000 every year out of the general fund to put in there. We've done that already in 2018. As we sit here today, and granted, we have our month-end piece of it that we still have to close out, but there is positive cash in there that is being supported by fuel cells and land rents.
So the number for fuel sales this year, is it higher than fuel expenses?
At this time, yes, it is. Now, if we were to purchase all 80,000 this month, which I don't anticipate we're going to, and based on what I know from talking to Cody on Friday, he wasn't purchasing anymore. So unless something happens on Saturday that caused him to call something today, we won't need to. So there will be a positive.
But right now, the fund, the reason we're amending it is because the airport fund shows a negative balance? Is that correct?
No, we had purchase authority of $589,000. Because we've had to buy more fuel over the course of the first 11 months, and what we're projecting might be necessary for December, we have to raise that budget authority to capture what we think could be expended over and above what was our legal authority.
Yeah, I see. I kind of jumped a question out of time, but we've only authorized in the expense budget total for fuel maintenance, all our expenses, $589,509.
That's correct.
So what actually we need with all our expenses is $750,000 in budget.
Right. At the time that we were putting this together, that was accounting for buying four sets of fuel this month.
And because of the increased sale of fuel, the anticipated increased sale, we're going to need to purchase more than what we, that one item.
That's right.
So that's why, I guess the confusion, the 80,000, if you're talking about purchasing fuel, but needing $160,000?
Yeah, the $80,000 that we're talking about is if we bought four sets of fuel, you know, three Jet A and then one Outgas for the month. We worked with Cessna towards the end of November to understand what their projections are, because they represent probably 95% of all of our sales out there. So understanding what they were going to need for the month, what our inventory level set at in the tanks at the end of November, we forecasted what we thought we were probably going to need. So we were already over budget from a, a purchase standpoint of the fuel through November already. Adding on what we could potentially need to buy in December is what's driven this increase.
So really, the 160, it's not a December need, but it's an accumulative need that happened throughout the year.
Absolutely.
And now that we're at the end of the year, not only do we have to clean up our over expenditure, whether it be fuel or other items at the airport, happens to be that we need additional 80,000, so basically, we overpurchased and overspent 80,000, and now we're looking and needing that cushion of 80,000 of fuel.
Yeah, just to make sure that we have it there, right? You know, we don't want to be telling Cessna, "I'm sorry, we can't fuel you today."
It was kind of confusing at first where you're talking, here you're saying you need $160,000, but you're telling us you only need to order 80,000 of fuel, so it's, you know, wait a minute.
Yeah, yeah.
When you look back at what you explained now, that we've ordered, we've oversold our projected fuel throughout the year, and it's not that we're spending money that wasn't in the fund. It's just we've got to clean up our bookwork, and we need to increase for this year in sale.
Yeah, you know, and this is a unique fund, as long as, well as sanitation and water sewer, they could be in the same situation. You know, our expenditures in many cases are driven off what our sales are. Because they're enterprise-type funds, they do have sales, whereas our other funds are not. So as sales increase, you know, our costs to do that in business also increases with that.
Yeah, because it's a little limited with the airport on our revenue.
It is.
We've got hangars and miscellaneous revenue points, but fuel is our big revenue source of one item, but yet you can't always set your fuel price to cover the whole expenses because you've got surrounding airports.
Yeah, I would like to point that out. I do have that in the slide. One thing that we also did see this year is the competitive market factors that go along with pricing that fuel. We had it paid at a certain dollar amount. Of course, at the time that we set those, I wasn't fully apprised of exactly where those margins were and how that market really worked. Seeing it further, you know, the other surrounding communities, people have an option when they're out in a plane, "Hey, I need a fuel. I can go five minutes further in fuel in Parsons, or Coffeyville, or Bartlesville." So we have to be careful with where we set those margins at to make sure that we're getting as much opportunity coming into our airport as possible. So as we've seen some of those other markets pull their margins down, we've ended up doing the same thing.
And that's where, if we look back at our leased agricultural land, it's what's important, that we get the most dollar per acre that we can, because that offsets our expenses required from fuel cell.
And we saw some really nice pricing there at the end of 2017, and then also getting track to Adrian in 2018. So we've got that market, the pricing on that pushed up. But it only represents about 10% or maybe even less than the total fuel sales. So we see that coming through the airport. Fuel cells, by far and away, are a large discrepancy source.
But the more we get for leased land, that offsets some of the maintenance, general maintenance of operating the airport, repair of equipment, so it all doesn't have to come from fuel cells.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, I think that, I understand. Now, that 80,000 for fuel with 160,000 increase, that was a little confusing, but I think now I understand.
And then, to be real honest with you, of course, I mean, we have to set this. We don't have to spend it, and I don't believe that we're going to come anywhere close to the 750, but we have a set number and a target, and that's what we're asking you to prove. I anticipate it coming in around 17. That's where I'm figuring it to be at this point.
Questions about the airport?
Yeah, that was a little confusing to me, but yeah, I think that cleared it up.
Okay, great.
The special use sales tax, we were using the building, a quarter cent for the building, generated taxes for the stage lighting, the trainer.
It covers everything except for the training systems. Training and training systems falls under the quarter percent for ADA.
That's ADA, okay. Okay. On the increased funding for ASU Center, is the increase there, let's see. Kind of got my notes spread out. Did you give a dollar amount?
It's going to be a $4,000.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah. I think our agreement is on the swimming pool that we share, the loss. Is that related to that?
It's not related to this.
Okay. Where, our increased funding then for the ASU Center, where do the $4,000, is that general funding? How did that?
No, I mean, it comes right out of, it comes right out of this fund.
But how does it come in that we need to contribute $4,000 more? Where does that number come from?
Yeah, we have an agreement with the city and the recreation that...
We are the city and the...
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, city rec, city rec and the school board. We have an agreement that the USD 446, as well as us, each one of us would pick up up to a maximum $10,000 of obligations annually on the ASU Center over and above their expenditures, and that's what they bill us for in 2018.
Okay, I thought it was... We do have an agreement on the swimming pool also, don't we?
We do, we do. So we pick up, if their expenditures exceed their revenues, they have to pick up the first $10,000 in losses, and we have to pick up the remainder. City sold it, and that is a separate issue from this.
So this $4,000 is another agreement that we have among all three of us?
Yes, and actually, it's, I had $6,000 in the budget. They bill us for 10. So that's the $4,000.
And this is strictly on operation of the ASU Center?
So we have some other funding that comes out of there, and I'm wanting to say this is where AWOL gets paid from?
Just the $4,000?
Yeah, but yeah, the $4,000 was in addition to the $6,000 that was budgeted for the ASU Center. So we had, we had a total of $30,000 budgeted in this fund for expenditures, and that included $6,000. They bill us for 10, so we were up by $4,000.
So did they bill us for $10,000 for the pool plus?
Actually, they bill us for $20,000 on the pool, and then $10,000 on the ASU Center.
And that was just general operational expenses on the center?
Yes.
Did it include maintenance and other?
Yeah, I mean, there are operations of everything that goes along associated with the ASU.
So pool, we were billed $20,000 in the ASU?
ASU was $10,000?
Yes.
So that means that the school district was also billed $10,000?
That's correct.
We were shipped.
Okay.
To my understanding, you'd have to ask them to make sure that, yes, they should have been.
Can we just consider a general operational expense?
Yes.
And let me back up here just a minute. You said we had budgeted $30,000 for the, for these expenses between the pool and the ASU Center?
Yeah.
Are you going to misunderstand? So $30,000, I was trying to take notes.
No, the $30,000 for the expenditures in this fund, I, my apologies, I can't remember where... Each month, there is a payment that goes out, and I'm wanting to say this is where we pay AWOL out of? Is that at this one? I'm not certain on that, and I can find that out for you. But that's $2,000 a month, so $24,000 annually.
For AWOL?
Yeah. I'm thinking, I'm going to verify that for you, but we do have the expenditures in there every year. It's $2,000, so there's $24,000. We had $6,000 allocated for the ASU. And we did the budget. It came in '18 instead of '16.
Do we not have $5,000 budgeted for operations and maintenance expense for AWOL?
AWOL?
Yeah, but that's not what...
Okay.
Yeah, there's monthly money that goes to AWOL, outside of that $5,000. $5,000 is for capital improvements for their facility.
So the rec center, are they a tax entity like the school on our property tax?
They are.
And then plus, we have an agreement that we will contribute above that tax rate, some flexible amount split between the city, like if they receive $100,000 from property tax generated, and their expenses then of operation go to $120,000, then the school district contributes $10,000, we contribute $10,000? Is that...
Yes, with regards to the ASU Center, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then that's just...
The pool operations is different.
Then the pool, I know that's, that's kind of a, well, they're both city properties, but kind of a different animal of its own?
Yes, it is, yeah.
What are the expenses at the pool, what do they average out that they're over?
Average?
Is it around 20 or more?
It's been around in between 10 and 20. I would say somewhere in there is the average annual. We've been working closely with them on it, trying to get a better feel and handle on exactly how their operations are going. Revenues, controlling some of those costs the best that we can in coordination with Brand. But this is where they ended up this year on that. They're roughly $30,000 over in the beginning. They have to use the first 10%, and we'll pick up the remainder.
I think that's one of the things we've talked about, and as we're looking at budgeting, with the quality of life sales tax going, that we've still got maintenance on those facilities that were created by funding through that tax, that some of the things that I think you guys are working on, looking...
Yeah, and we have some of that... We have some of that programmed into the '18 budget. They spent roughly $12,000, as I recall, in '18 on some improvements to the pool that are outside of that $20,000. Then you'll see some other programming for 2019s, as we work with them, some other improvements specifically that have been identified and need to be addressed.
Because it is a city facility that's just operated for the city by the rec commission.
That is correct.
And that's what, since things get older, you know, we go to the doctor more.
That's right.
Same with the building needs to see a doctor more often.
Yeah, it's hard to believe, that pool's roughly 20 years old now.
Yeah, it is. Okay. The bond and interest, I think you might, as you went through it, explain the, that 2010 portion you noted, it was just as you're building all the bonds, that it was an oversight?
It was not, yeah. It was, you know, I pulled up, because of course, I hadn't been here very long, so I was digging through everything that was available, just putting everything together. And I was aware, I'd been noted that the 2010 had been refunded or refinanced in 2016, creating the Series 16 bond. So I wasn't surprised that I didn't see a 2010 in the bond schedule that I had available to me. After the budget was put together, a different bond schedule was provided to me, and there was still a couple jurors' worth of payments that, not everything was captured there on that refinancing. So there was a portion remaining for 2010. The 2010 series, both in '18 and '19, that will be completely extinguished. Everything will then fall through on the 2016, so this increase represents what was missed on the 2019.
Okay.
And then it was captured in the 2019 budget, just FYI.
Okay. The education sales tax, that's a pass-through for their last project, basically, isn't it?
That's right. So they have bonds that were issued, we have bonds that were issued. And through that, we have 1% that's paying for both of those bond initiatives. So we collect 1%, we hold back and reserve our portion that's necessary to retire our obligations for that year. And the remainder on a monthly basis then is passed through to the, to the school district. So the increase, as you look at it over a 12-month period of time, and our payments are lagging by a month annually. So through 2018, we're only paying them through November, but we also captured December's and January's. So we have a full 12 months, but it's lagging by one month. But through the course of everything, we've had increased collections, so our pass-through, and then, you know, we don't zero it out from the cash standpoint, but everything that's collected somehow is distributed out annually.
So in the distribution, they were entitled to more than what we had budgeted, put in the budget. So now we're trying to even it out at saying this amount needs to go to them too in 2018.
Yeah, and, and this fund is done for the year, we've already paid everything. We've rounded it up slightly just in case some adjustment even be made in there that we find from accounting perspective in closing out the year. But everything that's been spent in this fund for 2018 has already been spent.
But again, this is a good problem to have.
No, no, absolutely.
Our sales tax collections are up, so we're paying them more than we expected.
That is right, yeah. So it's a good problem.
Yeah, it's a good problem.
I think that's all the questions that I have. Do you have any others to answer in the amendments?
No, I don't have any other.
And in our packet, we see copies of the notification and also the amended budget. So if there are no further questions, Mike, do you have any further information?
No, no, I don't. Just the certificate, of course, it, it marriage what's on the, the publication. So we'll go for the amended, post amended budget here. We'll have you sign the certificate and we'll get that filed with the county clerk.
Okay, so with no further questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the amended 2018 budget as presented. Excuse me.
Second?
Good motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is a German. I'll entertain a motion for a German.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried.